Waterboard, we're not... We're not eliciting information. Waterboarding and waterboarding.
How's it going?
Good much.
Thanks.
Yeah, there's a little bit of room in the public.
Thank you.
Welcome, everyone, welcome, welcome. Welcome to historic day Riverside. It's smart. Not because of the epic drought that we are facing, but because of a joint meeting that I believe is for the first time occurring here in this room between the board, Public Utilities, and the city council. I want to welcome you all as well as the public. And we'll start off today's meeting with the pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So as you see up on the screen today, we're in this together. And as you know, you've heard me say we are better together. And so that's why we're here today, and we've included the public in this, and we're going to ask them for a comment, beginning with Bob Stockton, and then followed by whoever else fills out a statement.
Well, good afternoon, everyone.
Same rules applies at the city council, so three minutes, please.
Okay, here we go. Well, most of you know that I've been indoctrinated as the chair of the Greater Riverside Chamber, so I'm here in that capacity. But I also served as a member of the RPU board for six years from 2004 to 2010, and I am currently the Division One Director for Western Ministry of Water Industry. But I'd like to make the following points. First of all, that Riverside Public Utilities is absolutely vital in terms of the economic interests of our community. And I'm really pleased to see that this meeting is happening today. This is historic. The utility industry is changing at light speed, and we must support the changes necessary at Riverside Public Utilities such that they continue to be an important driver of economic development. I've reviewed the meeting materials, the Utility 2.0 volume, and I wholeheartedly support the direction that's outlined in that document. It's obvious from my research and my experience that the changes that are taking place in the utility industry are dynamic and require similar dynamic response. Our utility is on strong financial footing, and we must preserve the balance between the utility being cost-effective and reducing their costs with the need to ensure sufficient funding to rebuild our aging infrastructure, some of which is over 100 years old, and build a technology infrastructure that will drive economic expansion. RPU contributes to business competitiveness. Our businesses in Riverside compete in the global marketplace. In order for us to keep our business community healthy, we need our electric and water utilities to remain competitive. RPU needs to adopt every innovation available to them in order to serve the business community better. This vision outlined in Utility 2.0 paints the right picture for the future. Thirteen plans outlined in this document are interlinked and need to be looked at as a system. As these plans are brought to you by the RPU boards and city council for implementation, the chamber's members are going to be constantly evaluating them to ensure that they are maximizing their impact on growth and the well-being of our businesses and community. The GRCC, Greater Riverside Chamber of Commerce, has identified developing more fiber optic assets within the city as a chamber priority. I'm really glad to see that this is an initiative that is highlighted in the report. In this time of continued drought, we need to ensure that all necessary action is taking place to attempt to comply with the state's regulations while at the same time making sure that economic activity in Riverside is not harmed. The transformation to Utility 2.0 is going to take many years, and I encourage the city council and the RPU board to embrace this transformation and also look at ways in which they can improve their governance of the utility so that there is adequate oversight coupled with sufficient delegation. Thank you.
Jason Hunter, followed by Kevin Dawson.
Hello there, Jason Hunter, Ward One. Let's talk about big picture items here today. Despite the claim that, or the campaign of the "I own it" campaign here we have in Riverside, Riverside Public Utilities is not a customer-owned utility. It is a publicly-owned utility. It is imperative of the council and the decision-makers, people in this community, understand what the difference is, okay? So let's talk about the structure. The board is appointed by the council. The council responds to various interests throughout the community. It has business interests, it needs to have people that don't live here with business interests it needs to respond to. There are tourists, there are neighboring governmental agencies, and of course, and there's many others. And I'm sure you folks who are on the council understand the different special interests that you need to respond to on a daily basis here. And of course, there's the residents as well. So there's various interests you have to respond to. Who, and that goes for the board as well. Well, who really represents the customers in the residents? And so the residents here have been, if it was truly a customer-owned utility, we would make the decisions, the customers would, as opposed to the way it's currently now. The residents have come forward in the last year or so and brought forth many issues, what we think are illegal tiered rates, which are being backed up by the courts, illegal transfer, which is being backed up by the courts, illegal water conservation charges, interest rate, inter-fund loan rate subsidies we thought were illegal under 218. The list goes on and on and on of all the ways that the customers and residents have thought that the utility has been used and abused by the city off of the backs of the customers for years. And so the customers, in my opinion, really need our own voice. And how are we going to get that voice? I really think this is either through, hopefully voluntarily, through this council initiates an office of ratepayer advocacy, or we need to put it on a ballot and create one, much like they did in Los Angeles in 2011. Let me tell you what an office of ratepayer advocacy would do. The Office of Ratepayer Advocacy is a city department established in order to shed greater light on the operations and finances and to serve as an independent watchdog charged with analyzing proposed increases in water and power rates on a timely and continuous basis. There is precedent for this. They have it in the municipal utility world of LA, and they have it in the investor-owned utility world with the CPUC. I think it is time, with the amount of money that is, comes in through that utility from the residents of this city, that this office gets established so that there is a strong, independent voice, clear and above the special interests that represent us. Thank you.
Kevin Dawson?
Good afternoon, I'm Kevin Dawson, I'm from Ward Two. And I was watching the videotape of the city council meeting from April 28th, and there, at the very end of the meeting, as everybody's trying to wrap it up and get out of there because it was rather late, the general manager was addressing the council, and one councilman, MacArthur, asked a very simple and direct question. Is Riverside Public Utilities selling surplus water? And the director answered, yet to me, that was a simple, direct yes or no type of question, yet the answer given was convoluted and, I think, designed to kind of obfuscate answering. And I don't think the answer was actually ever answered. It was confusing. So I'd like to ask the question again. Is or has Riverside Public Utilities been selling surplus water? Now, I think that we have surplus water because we've been boasting that, well, we haven't had to buy or import water for four years, so we must have extra water. And I think that we can't bank water in the ground that when we are awarded a, by the water master over in San Bernardino or whoever, a right to harvest a certain amount of water, we have to harvest 100% of our water, or we can lose that right to that water. Somebody else is going to lay claim to it. So I would like to, I'd like to simply answer the question, are we selling surplus water? Yes or no? And if you'd like to elaborate, yes, please do. I'd like to understand this. And, you know, I'm troubled by the director's other comments that they're studying and planning to monetize the water rate, the water that we are saving through this forced conservation. That really rubs me the wrong way. I don't think of water as a commodity. I think legally it is something we have a right to, and I think you need to explain to us how you're going to have the legal right to convert a water that we have a right to into a commodity and make a profit on it for the city general fund or whoever. That's something that needs to be, it needs to be discussed in plain English, in front of the entire public, not up on the seventh floor where it's not being videotaped so that the general public can have access to this discussion. And it shouldn't be done in closed session. This needs to be a very public discussion. It involves everyone. After all, we own it, right? I think that we do have challenges statewide, but that doesn't mean that, you know, decisions should be made in, out of the eyesight of the public. The public should be involved. Thank you.
Raise a couple of comments to close.
I'm her. Hello, everyone, my name is Teresa Newham, and I'm here today to say that I do support having an office of ratepayer advocacy. I also do think that we are in a drought, and I saw this morning that the city of LA is doing what I have an idea for, and that is, my swimming pool evaporates two inches a week that I have to fill. So I'm looking into how to cover that because then 99% of the evaporation is gone, and I do think that we need to get involved in advocating at the state and federal level to stop selling our Arrowhead water and our spring water to Nestle and Coca-Cola and everybody else that is taking that water and putting it in bottles like that. That's absolutely ridiculous. And so I also wanted to say, it's Mother's Day, Sunday, and I wanted to let Colleen know that out of everybody here, she's the hardest worker I've ever met, and so is everybody in her office, so have another.
Anybody else? Public comment? All right, then we'll close public comment for this meeting, joint meeting of the board and the council, and I'll just give a brief intro in terms of setting it up for future conversations because I don't believe that this is the last time that we'll get together. I think it's a start. And I was, I was honored to go or be invited up to the governor's office, I guess it was two weeks ago now, or the last week, running together. And what we told him, 15 mayors around the state, was basically that this was going to be pretty tough to achieve those goals, almost impossible, if not impossible. And so the message was pretty loud and clear from those mayors about the issue at hand, and it was reflected in Ms. Felicia Marcus's comments this week. She's the State Water Resources Control Board Chairwoman, and her quote was, "It's time to get real about this, we're clearly in the drought of our lives." And so truly, that's why we're here today. As I challenged the governor to three things, I'll challenge you all to three things today as well, and I said to him, "We need leadership at the state level and beyond. We need communication, strategic communication from your office, and open lines of communication, and we need acceleration, acceleration in terms of the projects that we have waiting in the wings," and I think we'll hear about some of those today, there's in the material you have bound in front of you. And so today for us, second, the meeting goals, the three things alignment. Again, we need to align ourselves around this table and the goals of the council and the utility, communication amongst each other as well as to the public, and you'll see examples and hear about examples of that today. And then action, right? Action, we have to take action. That's what the governor has imposed through his mandates, and if we don't take action, there's going to be some more than equal and opposite reaction by the state. But I know that we're up for the challenge, and I think that that's why you all have come to the table today. So I appreciate both the board members and the council members and staff that are here here today. I like the fact that you have given us this notebook. What's the big idea? That's what we're here for today, right? Strategic communications. In an organization, you have strategy, you have operations, you have tactics. We're policymakers for the most part, or the operations staff. And so I'd ask you to keep your comments and questions at that strategic level because, again, we'll be having more in-depth and further conversation on this issue in the months to come and years to come, especially if the rain doesn't come. And with that, I'll turn it over to my co-chair here for the meeting, the chair of the Public Utilities Board, Susan Cash.
Thank you. Well, on behalf of the board, we are very appreciative of this opportunity to dialogue with the council. We believe that we are navigating whitewater, and as we do that, we have to keep our eye on the horizon. So we're looking at both short-term and long-term goals. As members of the board, you have appointed us, we're citizen residents of Riverside, we are ratepayers, we are always cognizant of our role and responsibility to the community. We want to make sure that we are in complete alignment with what the council direction is and that there is recognition that we're on the same team. So again, we have great hope for wonderful results of this day and that our outcomes lead us to future dialogue. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Bailey. So I'm going to take a minute to go over our agenda and kind of set the stage of what the next couple of hours are going to look like. First, on this side of the room, you have our meeting goals, which Mayor Bailey went through. We will return to these goals at the end of the meeting. We're going to have a plus delta, we have what you experienced from this meeting, we're going to come back and get each of your input to see, did we meet those goals? Going through the agenda, soon after my talking minute, we're going to have a video presentation, followed by Susan Wilson will have a presentation on the city charter specifically on the board's responsibilities related to RPU and the council. After that, I have a presentation to you, about 15 minutes, talking about Utility 2.0. We'll take a very short break where I'm going to ask all of you to go up onto the pavilion, and there are two tables there, one's gold and one's blue. So you have this in front of you, so you're either going to go to the gold table or the blue table, at which point we will have, we're going to have a breakout session for about 45 minutes in terms of getting some very structured input from you on Utility 2.0, et cetera. We'll explain that to you later. Then we come back, we do the plus delta, we planned this meeting for two hours, we're starting a little off time given when we started, so it may be about 3:15 or 3:20 before we wrap up. With that, Mike, would you start the video?
Here's a really interesting question to think about. Could you be MP3? What's going to happen in a world in which one customer is generating their own energy and another customer is generating their own energy, and they say to each other, "Hey, why don't we share a little bit of energy?" Think about the music industry. Think about what happened when MP3s first appeared on the scene. All of a sudden, consumers were in control of how they consumed the media. And what did some media organizations do? They fought back, they fought the customer. Think about Sony. Sony was once a really cool brand. They had the Sony Walkman, and then they went to war with their customers. In the future, you're going to be hearing a lot about microgrids. You're going to be in a world in which more consumers are generating their own backyard in solar and wind and other forms of power. We live in a world in which the rapid advancements of battery technology is going to lead to fundamental change. And as this occurs, we will have customers who will be generating their own electricity and talking to their neighbors and talking to their friends and doing what they did in the MP3 world. Think about the speed of technological change and how quickly this technology becomes a part of our daily life. Think about what's happening in the world of banking. The big trend that is going to unfold is the credit cards in our pockets are going to disappear because our cell phones are going to become credit cards. And all of a sudden, banks are going to find that they're competing with companies like Google, Facebook, and PayPal, companies that innovate a lot faster than they do. It's also the speed with which the change is occurring. When radio came out, it took 38 years to reach 50 million people. Intelligence came out, it took only 13 years. When the internet arrived on the scene, it only took four years to reach 50 million people. iPads came out, it took only three years. And put it in the context of mobile devices. You know, just over a quarter of a century ago, there were 4.7 billion people on the planet, and there weren't any cell phones. And today, we're in a world of 7 billion people with 6 billion mobile devices. The potential for the mobile device in our energy world is absolutely staggering. Imagine a world in which I can easily control the cost of my energy spend, but not just that. Imagine a world in which I have control as a consumer over my energy inputs through my mobile device. I could choose solar, I could choose wind, I could choose microgrid. You know, we are emerging into a world in which increasingly, this is becoming the window into our world, and in which the consumer will be making decisions not only about cost but about source. It has staggering implications because it's a world in which the consumer increasingly is in control. The speed of innovation in every single industry is shifting from that industry over to Silicon Valley and technology companies. It's happening in the world of insurance. We're seeing the emergence of GPS performance tracking devices that monitor driver behavior. If you show good driving behavior, you're stopping at all the stop signs, you're not accelerating too fast, you get a rebate on your insurance. It's happening in the world of healthcare, the rapid emergence of health and wellness apps, tracking devices that track your athletic behavior. And all of a sudden, what is happening is the healthcare sector is discovering, innovation is no longer occurring just in the healthcare sector, technology companies are driving that change. And it's happening in the world of utilities. Traditional HVAC equipment is becoming interconnected, it's becoming plugged together, it's becoming intelligent. What are utilities going to do in a world where the consumer is in control of how they use their energy? The energy they choose to use, how they choose to change their personal energy infrastructure through the connectivity that is part of their lives? Your industry is being redefined, it's being redefined by technology, it's being redefined by the customers, it's being redefined at a furious rate of speed. And your choice is to innovate, change, and adapt so that you turn these trends into opportunity. You embrace the future, become a part of the future, and redefine the future with your customers.
Susan will now talk about the city charter.
And this will be very brief, I just wanted to remind everyone of how our city charter works and how the board and council work together. Three things, I'll go over the powers of the city council as they affect the Public Utilities Department, Measure MM, which was adopted by the voters in 2004, and the powers of the board of public utilities as a result of Measure MM. First of all, city charter, all of the powers of the city are vested in the city council except as otherwise stated in the charter. I took a couple of key points that, from the charter affecting the RPU board, you use the city council, you appoint and remove the RPU board members. They are appointees, they are not electeds. You adopt ordinances and resolutions that affect the board of public utilities and RPU. Most importantly, you approve the RPU budget, the council does that. You can also waive formal construction procurement methods, meaning that, and this is very rarely applied, for certain public utilities, like our power generation plants with Merck and Springs, we did not go through a formal bid process, we went through a design build bid process, very sparingly applied. And you also approve rates recommended by the RPU board. Measure MM was adopted in November of 2004. Every seven years, we put together a citizens committee to review the city charter, they make recommendations to the city council, and the city council has the option to put their minds to the ballot. Under Measure MM, it's awarded new powers to the RPU board. They have the ability now to award construction contracts, they can approve the procurement of goods and services, and they also, the voters also authorized the RPU general manager to negotiate and to view customer contracts for utility services. The first two powers are currently being utilized, the third one has not been used yet, I don't explain why. But there are limits on Measure MM. The board still has to comply with certain things under the charter and are subject to the city council. They can't exceed their city council-approved budget. They can only, they only have the independent authority when it applies to goods, services, and construction projects. The individual customer contracts that I talked about before, those are only done in accord with rates adopted by the city council. There has been no rate which would allow the individualized customer contracts, but it's in the charter. At the end of the presentation, I'll tell you why the voters were asked to approve this. And all of the contracts must be approved by the city council. I would reach out to give a couple of examples of things that will still go to the board for recommendation but are subject to city council for approval. I looked back through your agendas over the last year to pull out a couple of examples. Real property... You've recently seen a number of stolen PPAs, power purchase agreements. Those again are approved by the city council. Wholesale water agreements, you recently, for example, approved one with Riverside Highland Water Company. All grants go to the city council. For example, you've approved an educational grant to UCR for some research settlement grants to approve by the city council. And agreements that are not within the city council-approved budget, still have to go to the city council. An example of this is the Harbingel substation. That's the substation that had an explosion some time ago. Because the cost was not even in the capital improvement budget, it was unexpected, we had to go to the city council for additional review. And I took this from the voter pamphlet that was provided as part of the ballot, you know, two quotes that were taken in the arguments in favor of measure MM. There were no arguments against measure MM. Just like to leave them to you. The city should be allowed to service utility customers faster than the current charter allows. Under this proposal, the city council would still control all spending policies. And secondly, regarding approval of customer contracts, it allows the city to attract and retain economically important institutions and companies. And if deregulation occurs, it would allow the city to compete with the utility of its biggest customers. I thought this was important because this came from four members of the charter review committee. They provided the argument in favor of measure MM. I think this illustrates, based upon my sitting through all of their discussions, that that was the reason measure MM was brought forward. So unless anyone has any questions, I'll turn the presentation down to three.
This measure MM was voted on by the people, the city council?
Correct.
So they gave us direction on how they want their utility run?
Correct. This was a formal amendment to the city charter that amended the city charter for the powers and duties of the board of public utilities.
I thought we were just doing what we knew, and it turns out, we're doing exactly what the people voted us to do. Run this the way we used to run, in the ways they elected us to do it. Okay. Just wanted to make sure. Then once I get it. Thank you.
We'll move on to my presentation. I'm going to take about 15 minutes to talk about utility 2.0. First of all, I wanted to thank all of you for coming together. It really is great with Dr. Lamir and Chair Cash, like, yep, let's get together, it's time to talk about where RPU is headed. So I'm going to frame my talk, but before I do, just make sure that you have materials. You have this book called Utility 2.0. We have three reference papers. I don't expect you to read that right now. You didn't have much time. Those papers are presented to our board. We've gone through a multi-month strategic planning process with the board, and this is the result of that process. The first several pages are what we need to focus on today, and that's what my presentation's going to be. You also have a book called Smart Power, which talks about climate change and the future of electric utilities. Even though the electric utility is changing a lot and very fast, the water utility has many of those changes in common, too. So, utility 2.0 and planning for the future. This board and council has done a remarkable job over the years in getting us to where we are. When you think about the kind of utility we are, think about water. We're in the middle of the worst drought in California. And even though we have hit with that 28%, my forecast is, we're going to be much better than nearly every other community in the state. And that didn't come about by accident. That came about by the city council and the board acting to actually invest in our future, planning for our future. On the electric side, the kinds of projects that you have implemented, we have RUP right here, which allows us on very hot summer days to meet that meeting alone. We went through the energy crisis without having rolling blackouts. Dom Evans is in the audience, just thought of that. So we've done some amazing stuff to get to here. My talk, I'm framing it, we have some good news for you, have some bad news, and I have some good news at the end again. So three pieces to it. An overarching theme that I'm going to repeat a couple of times is, what got us here is not going to take us there. So we are doing really well right now. We are a good utility. We have been awarded the diamond status by the American Public Power Association. We're only one of two California public power entities to get that diamond status. It looks at reliability, workforce, safety, and how much money we're investing in expanding and maintaining our system. So we're doing really well in all those areas. However, let's get to utility 2.0. What you have in front of you is our mission, that hasn't changed, that's stayed about the same for many years. The board through the last several months has updated the goals and our long-range implementation plans, and I'll get into that. This graphic, which is in your book, kind of lays out a picture of going from left to right. On the left is what the city council has put together, which is seizing our destiny, and then building on it from what you started doing last December. When you came up with your strategic plan and talked about Riverside 2.0, that's the foundation upon which we are building what we are calling utility 2.0. And at the center of it is customer satisfaction, the customer experience, and community value. So that, at the end of the day, never changes. We may change our tactics, our investments, et cetera, but it's about customer experience and community value. So as I go from left to right, I want to talk to you about industry trends. That's the bad news. We have several trends outside of our control, just changing our business. It's very fast, it's very dynamic. Aging infrastructure. We have infrastructure, some of which is more than 100 years old. Just because something's old doesn't mean it's bad. You also have to look at, is it performing well? What's the condition of your infrastructure? We have infrastructure that is not performing very well. Regulation. All across the state, nationally, regulators can't keep their hands off the utility business. Let's bend coal. We'll tell you how much energy efficiency you have to use. This is what technology you have to put in. It's exploded exponentially, it's made our business extremely complex. These are global trends of innovation and technology that is forcing this regulation. Competition. We have competition in our system today. When you have solar on roofs, that's competition. Last week, Elon Musk announced battery storage for the residential sector. That's competition. Our business is fundamentally changing. For 100 years, we had power flow going one way. Generated it, transmitted it, distributed, came to your homes and businesses, one way. With solar and energy storage, that distribution system is now going to be a grid. It's going to be two-way power flow. That's the future. You're going to have electric vehicles plugged in. Electric vehicles not just sucking in power, but we may tap into the batteries of electric vehicles to take power from them immediately. Solar is going to generate power. No longer is California going to have a peak in the middle of summer, or the middle of the day. We're all used to saying, oh, if we peak in the middle of the day, that's going away. By the year 2020, the peak is going to happen in the evening because of the amount of solar we have been pumped into our system, thousands of megawatts every day. It's incredible, the changes that we have. Going back to that video, it's power to the people. How do we get our grid together to meet those challenges? So when I talk about new technologies, it's essentially, you have the utility layer, which is the pipes, the reservoirs, booster stations, our overhead lines, our transformers, that's the utility layer. That ain't changing. You have to replace it, maintain it, build it. But now you're going to have another layer on top of that, which is the technology layer. And that technology layer is something we don't have. Today, if I want to know if one of our customers loses power, I don't know about it, unless you call them and tell them. I'm going to give you some numbers now. I'm going to give you four numbers, each with a little story to it, that essentially, encapsulate something, which is, we're about 10 years behind in technology. There are reasons why we are behind in technology because, and we can get to that, with the recession of 2007, et cetera, we decided to go slow. But at this point, the gap widens every day. We have new players coming into this industry every day. And that's part of the need to accelerate our changes. So four numbers. First, nine minutes. Nine minutes is the average time that a consumer in the United States interacts with their utility every year. Nine minutes. That's all the time we have. Twenty-seven. Twenty-seven is the number of media platform changes that a millennial moves through in 60 minutes. That's our future customer. They are going to interact to this, essentially what that video said. And that's what they're used to. This is how they look up and they live their lives. Six hours, that's number three. Six hours is, there's a utility up in Northern California, in Durham, or Truckee, down in Public Utility District. They provide every one of their customers, they have water usage, that's six hours old. So at any time, you can go in, say, what's my usage over the last few years? Or what's my usage yesterday? And they'll break it down in six-hour increments for you. And you can choose how you want to get that data. You want it over a cellphone, you want it on a website, you can choose how you're going to get that data. We provide that information maybe once every 780 hours. Last number, the range. $55 to $109 million. That is the amount of money RPU will lose over the next 10 years due to solar being installed in Riverside. So that's the bad news, that we're behind. There are challenges that are going to apply pressure to us. All right. So what's the good news? Look at the future. This is the future where our grid is going to be modernized, it's electric and water are resources. We have to embrace change, we have to embrace solar, energy storage, electric vehicle. Look at the customer experience, at every aspect of the customer experience, right from providing a resilient water supply system. Enhance customer usage measurement, providing them data analytics, creating a grid which is plug and play. You know, something City Manager Russo has welcomed address two days ago, he mentioned. I had the same impression, which is, sometimes you don't know how good we have it here, and outside of coming in, this gets to the good news of what we have. We have very strong dogs. So when you think about these challenges, I feel extremely optimistic about it. It's this meeting right here of all of you basically coming together and looking at those meeting goals, saying, how are we going to address the challenges of the future? Your financial state is amazing. Over the last 10 years, we have built up our reserves, mostly from non-rapier revenues. It's from revenues coming from outside of Riverside. And we'll be addressing it with the finance committee in a couple of weeks to provide them a presentation of our reserves. Our staff, just an amazing dedicated staff that you have in Riverside, in RPU, working with the other departments. The new administration, you know, I worked for AL, it's just the ideas that are coming in. We have the bones to really meet every one of these challenges. So here's an overview of how we're going to meet them. There are 13 plans we've put together over the next four years or so. This is just an outline, this is not a Gantt chart necessarily, but tells you that we have to be working every one of these. When you go from utility, what I'd say where we are, 1.1 or so, to utility 2.0, it's a systems change. It's not about changing, let's try these two initiatives, or these four initiatives. It's the entire system that we're changing. Because we have to catch up with the rest of the industry, meet our customer expectations. So that's where we are headed. I feel very confident about it. Over the next six months or so, we have planned coming to the board and to the city council, and maybe, and I'm sure you'd have more discussions in your breakout sessions about how you want this information communicated to you and brought to you. For example, in June, our strategic technology plan will be presented to the board. In July, we will provide our fiber business plan to the board. Between August and October, we will present our water infrastructure plan and our electric infrastructure plan. In the last quarter of this year, we will present our 10-year pro forma. We will have a 10-year forecast of what our average rates are going to be. Reserve policies will be updated. We'll talk to you about our reserve levels and our bond coverage ratio. On May 15, we go in front of the board, asking for their permission on initiating a cost-to-service study for our water rates. That study will be done by the beginning of the fourth quarter of this year. We share with the board, we're going to look at all our water rates from top to bottom, and present you the results of that. On May 15, we'll also be looking at some studies around operational efficiencies. So the point I'm trying to make is, this is in play already, the number of things in terms of information that we're going to bring to the board, and I'm looking forward to bring to the city council. I feel very confident about us getting to utility 2.0, and I'm looking forward to the breakout sessions and getting your input. So that's the end of my presentation. If you have any questions in my presentation, I'll be happy to take that. And then after that, we'll talk about our breakouts. Any questions at this time? Okay. Well, thank you very much. So if you look at your name tags, please go up, and the public, we have, Republican staff, we have room for you to observe the facilitated discussions. And so there's a blue team and a gold team. So please.